Welcome to the Town of Garner's regular meeting, the Town Council of October 7th, 2025. I'm going to start out with the usual good news. October is now officially my favorite month, not only to start with Fireman's Day, ending Halloween, trick or treat on the trails, but it happens to also be the birthday of our chaplain, Louis Long, who we will be here from later. So it's really a big month. I just couldn't wait to get that out before he even called the roll. But having said that, I would ask the town clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Gubton.
Here.
Mayor Proten Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Thank you. All present, and Mayor Proten Vance has taken charge of the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Mr. Vance?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Gubton. We have here with us this evening, Mr. Michael Harper and the scout troop of 253. They will give us our pledge of allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, and you're welcome to stay as long as you like, but you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, and now we have the invocation will be given to us by Chaplain Louis Long, and happy birthday to you, sir.
It's coming up soon.
Okay.
Good evening, all. Please join me in prayer as you feel led. Our heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the health you've given each of us as well. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we have to meet here and follow the leadership and the guidance of this wonderful town that we live in. We pray, Father, that you give the mayor and the councilmen your guidance, Father, in establishing new projects and new programs, and we pray, Father, that you give them harmony, unity, wisdom, and your guidance as what is best for all the citizens of Garner as Garner continues to grow. We just ask your blessing on that, Lord. We pray, Father, for each one here tonight as well, those presenting programs or plans that you'd under their presentation, Lord, that they'd speak clearly and be able to transmit what they want to establish or what they want to have passed and under consideration. And I just pray, Father, that you now bless this meeting in Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. And at this point, we're to part B of the agenda, petitions and comments. And I'll ask the town clerk if anyone has signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. Katie Cardenas is our first person.
Okay, excellent. I'm glad we have some citizens to participate. That gives me the opportunity to read the little disclaimer here before we start. And this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but will not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. We do have the three-minute time limit that's run by our officials back in the hidden kingdom over there that operate all of this stuff. So that being said, please introduce yourself by name and address.
Hi, my name is Katie Downerthakarthenas, 1609 South Wade Avenue in Garner. Good evening, mayor and council members. I come before you today with enormous gratitude, having spent seven months of last year on the Garner Affordable Housing Task Force, and then watching as the town council voted against the hiring of a full-time staff member to focus on affordable housing. I was so disappointed... Okay, there we go. I was so disappointed that I was unable to make a large enough impact through the work that I did on the task force. Instead of joining again this year, I have moved on to other ways of impacting the needs of our housing insecure neighbors, including serving bi-weekly meals at Kings Ridge, CASA NC's national model for supportive housing, organizing educational and advocacy meetings that I will talk about in a minute, leading weekly community prayer about our housing crisis, and continuing to work with Hope Ministries, where you are always, each one of you invited, to serve with us on any Saturday morning. Thank you, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance, for visiting, and especially Mr. Singleton, for all the showers your son and then you have cleaned for our guests. It is recognized and appreciated. I attended the first new task force meeting yesterday as an observer and was ecstatic to hear that since receiving the data in August that clearly demonstrated the growing need for affordable housing, Mr. Vance is now fully supportive of a full-time affordable housing staff position. I expect this item will be on the next town council's agenda before Election Day to demonstrate the town's commitment to this need for which so many candidates are running. So I was upset that I wasn't effective, but I'm glad that moving on, I have at least made an impact, and we do actually have that. And Ms. Behringer also has that on her items for what she's running for, so I'm excited that I'm hoping the next agenda will include that vote. And the second reason I come before you is to invite you. Realizing the lack of collaboration across the county related to affordable housing, we have organized a conference that invites all town council candidates from across the entire county to learn from and network with key affordable housing partners. Pastor Robinson mentioned the importance of this education at the task force meeting yesterday, and I was happy to invite him and Mr. Swain of the task force. Pastor Wolfgang of Lord of Life Lutheran Church has generously opened doors of his church to us this Friday from 5:00 until 7:00 in the evening, and I am sure you will learn a lot about the collaborative strategies from Morgan Mansa, Wake County Housing Affordability and Community Revitalization Director, Jacqueline Ayala of Habitat Wake, Brandy Melcher, Board Member of the TCC, Triangle Community Coalition, Christina Jones, Raleigh City Council Member, Rachel Tewiler of DHIC, and Amy Smith, Executive Director of the Women's Center in Raleigh. I hope that you are all able to attend this and future meetings. Thank you for your time, your attention, and I look forward to seeing the vote for your commitment to affordable housing at the next council meeting before election time. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Always well received. Is there another person signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, sir. Mary Ryder.
Yes, ma'am. If you would please come to the podium, introduce yourself, full name and address.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mary Ryder. I've lived at 124 Purdue Street in Garner for the last 11 years, and prior to that, I lived 10 years right outside of the Garner city limits. So I've been around since 1991. I'm going to talk quickly because I have a lot to say. I have been a social worker in home health since 1990, visiting seniors and people with disabilities all around the Triangle and beyond. I have visited the poorest of the poor and the richest of the rich, houses that should have been condemned and houses in gated communities. I want to talk about a woman I know in Garner who should be considered middle class. She's a retired teacher with excellent credentials. She bought her home in town for $128,000, and now it is worth $340,000. Well, everyone thinks that is great, except that now with the new tax value, her insurance and taxes alone have gone up $170 a month. So her house is more than doubled in value, but where is she going to go if she sells her house? Because there's nowhere else to buy a house for what she paid for this one. Furthermore, because she was a teacher and her income isn't super low, she can't qualify or benefit from any discounted tax rates from the county or for any sort of community resources, really. So like so many of my patients, she's too wealthy to qualify for assistance, but not wealthy enough to pay her bills, and sometimes she wonders how she's going to pay for her prescriptions. Let's consider also maybe the salary of a retail worker in Garner. If somebody's making $15 an hour, that's double minimum wage, but that works out to about $620 a week. If an average apartment in Garner, according to the records I read from here, is $1,944 a month, that person who works in Garner can't afford to live in Garner. They also, though, have too much money to get any public assistance like Medicaid or food stamps or housing vouchers. And then I want to talk about my disabled patients. So if a person has been disabled so long that they were not allowed to, not able to pay into Social Security enough to get disability, the maximum amount that they can get from SSI is $967 a month. My daughter, who graduated from Garner High School this past year, is developmentally disabled. So far, we haven't been able to get her a job, so she may never get more than that. So if she was not living with me and her father, where would she live? She's an adult. She's 20 years old. She can't afford an apartment, and sometime, she's not going to be able to live with me and her father. So I really am just coming before the council to ask the town to please to keep all of these people, someone who is middle class, someone who is making $15 an hour, and someone who is disabled, all of whom really cannot afford to live in one of the fastest-growing towns in the nation. I love living in Garner. That's why I've lived here so long, but I want to make sure that other people can be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to hear stories of real people as opposed to just statistics. Very helpful. Anyone else signed up?
No, sir. That was the last person.
Thank you very much. We'll move right along toward the item number C, item, the adoption of the agenda. Let's see. The council members have had a chance to look that over. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So move. Second, sir.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Vance. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, the agenda is officially adopted, which brings us to D, presentations. We don't have presentations this evening. We've had a number of them at the last few meetings. Now we get to the consent agenda, section E, and these are a number of issues primarily administrative in nature that have been reviewed by the staff and by council members as opposed to one by one with discussion, most of a rather routine nature. We need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. If there are any items that need to be removed, council members discretion for specific consideration, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to ask a question about the bid on White Deer Park inclusive playground. I was just wondering if the bid is awarded tonight, what's the timeframe of start of construction and possible when the project may be ready next year?
Good evening, mayor and council members. If the bid is awarded tonight, we will negotiate, finalize the contract with the vendor. They typically have about 60 days to begin construction. This is a fairly simple project. We're not necessarily, we're working on an existing site, and it has limited utility, so we do expect that it should be ready by summer of 2026.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your question?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Agenda 8 for discussion, the adoption of past minutes.
Okay. Well, we'll pull that one out. We'll come back to that and address that one separately. Are there any other adjustments or any other questions related to the consent agenda?
We approve items 1 through 7.
I second it. There's a motion. I have a second to remove items 1 through 7. If there's no other discussion, we'll go to a voice vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted with the exception of item number 8 that will be brought back up later in the meeting for further discussion. Moving right along here, let's go to item F, public hearings. There are no public hearings. We can go back to the one item on the consent agenda. Why don't we do that while we're here? Councilman Dellinger, you had some questions about council meeting minutes.
So we're going to do that first.
Why not?
I was just curious of, let me see, there in the attachment, the action, is there other information on the closed sessions included in minutes elsewhere? I guess that's a question for the town attorney. Other than we went into closed session?
Are you asking about the closed session minutes?
Yes.
They're kept separately.
They're not part of this agenda packet?
No, because they're not released publicly.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. No other questions on the consent agenda?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, again, no public hearings. It brings us to new and old business, item G, and number one is transportation plan contract discussion. And we will hear from Julian Griffey and perhaps from Jeff Treisenberg as well this evening. So, gentlemen, please tell us what we need to know about the transportation plan contract.
Absolutely. Good evening, Town Council. Mayor Gubton. Julian Griffey, the senior planner for the town. This is my first time presenting, and I'll be presenting before you the transportation element, which is going to be the comprehensive plan update focusing on that transportation segment. So just wanted to outline at least kind of a structure of tonight's presentation. We'll be first visiting existing transportation plans that the Town of Garner has, then looking at the timeline of this transportation element update, going through a higher-level review of the draft scope of work that is within the packet, and then subsequent next steps. So going into the existing transportation plans that the Town of Garner has, I presented, or I have three visible ones in front of you. I want to focus on first the Garner Transportation Plan that was adopted in 2010. And then generally speaking about transportation plans, they contain various forms of elements for visionaries. They look at demographics. They look at the intent and the desires of the town and where we want to progress from a transportation perspective. They also have various elements of land use and then demographics and other various attributes. The next plan is going to be the middle one. That was first looked at in 2016, ultimately adopted in 2018. That serves as an update to the 2010 plan. So it wasn't exactly a complete overhaul, but it did revisit transportation elements and visionaries for how the town wants to progress from a transportation perspective. The furthest one on the right is going to be the Chapter 5 of the Garner Forward 2023 Plan. That is serving as a placeholder for the overhaul. So that's what we're visiting specifically today, is once that is crafted and developed, it will be embedded into the Garner 2023 Comprehensive Plan. Going into further existing transportation plans, we do look at the regional perspective, so taking that integration of transportation and marrying that with land use both locally, but then also in the regional context. I did want to focus on this particular slide and place this in here because, if I could see, one element of local transportation plans in that bottom-right visual, local transportation plans help contribute towards funding mechanisms and prioritization projects on the state, a regional, and a federal level. So having locally adopted and up-to-date plans help contribute towards a prioritization and ultimately funding for the projects that we prioritize, we identify within our plans. At the MPO level or Metropolitan Planning Organization level, they are mandated, and they do want to identify projects that are consistent with the MTP and the MPO plans. So we would take this particular plan. It would go to the MPO and then be adopted and integrated into their greater scheme of things, finding it consistent, and then being eligible for funding, federal funds of that nature. Again, with these local transportation plans, they help prioritize projects decided by the MPO for STIP, for spot funding, and that's why it's pretty key to have adopted and up-to-date transportation plans. So I did want to present as far as this transportation element update. As far as this goes, this RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, came out in June of the summer. However, this has been, from my understanding and discussion, for quite a bit of time. Of course, we know that Garner is developing the way that it's developing and having an updated transportation plan, given the original plans from 2010 and then the update in 2018. We do want to have something a bit more recent that takes into account all of these various new modes, modes that are coming onto line like the BRT or potential future commercial rail, things of that nature. It was, from my understanding, a multi-departmental effort, so we did bring in people from various departments, police, fire, engineering, parks and rec, to get together and brainstorm this RFQ that was ultimately put out in June through July of '25. We did receive the submissions by the deadline in late July. There were four submissions from various entities, and ultimately three were decided to be brought into interviews. The interviews took place in August. They were assessed based off of various attributes, their skill set, their team members, their familiarity with both Garner as well as the regional context, plans from Campo, other data analysis attributes of the team. And the panelists were comprised of planning as well as engineering, parks and rec, and a member of Campo was also present in that interview and selection process. And it did come to a conclusion after vetting, after discussions, and then assessing their submittals as well as discussing internally, that Bolton and Menck has been selected as the identified candidate most qualified for the RFQ. So then, following that decision in August, the scope of work was ironed out between planning, engineering, and a member from Parks and Rec, as well as Bolton and Menck, and went through various iterations to get to the draft scope of work that is within your packet today. Regarding next steps, we would want council to see the content of that, the scope of work, again, going through the multiple iterations, the interviews, what's been submitted, and the assessment by the various staff members, as well as Campo. We do feel that they adequately responded to the RFQ to the satisfaction and the deliverables and the goals that we would like to achieve as a town with that RFQ standard. So going into the high level of the draft scope of work, I did want to highlight the main principles, the main goals of what we would like as the outcome of this RFQ and ultimately this transportation plan. There is a key fundamental large community partnering element that is, of course, substantial when developing any form of comprehensive plan. This will be both the development of advisory and stakeholder groups, input from planning commission as well as town council, and then, of course, engagement workshops that are public-facing. Those will both be physically present as well as digital platforms and other social media outreach that can be eventually comprised and compiled into the development of future projects or future recommendations as we see fit. Another very important key element that, after reviewing the 2010 and the 2018 plans, is the data aggregation component. One fundamental piece that we really wanted to harp on within the RFQ, and it was explicitly stated within the RFQ, is going to be the origin and destination element. What that, in layman's terms, what that translates to is we want to know where people within our community and the neighboring communities, where they're going, how they're going, and that can shed light on the infrastructure, the strain of it, where we'd like to invest in alternative modes, other variabilities of that nature. Would microtransit be viable on a particular network because so many people are utilizing that? Should we do a fixed route? Would a BRT station maybe sufficient here? Things of that nature. That will all eventually make it into the recommendations following that data process and that data analysis. Of course, we've grown leaps and bounds beyond the 2010 and 2018 demographics, so we do want to hone in on that. That'll be both the sheer number of increase in residents that have moved here, but then also taking the statistics from an economic, financial, ethnically oriented background to see how that plays into the ultimate decisions and recommendations of this particular plan. Another piece within data inventory and analysis is going to be the policy assessment. So we do have the 2010 and then the 2018 plans, but we do have, from my understanding, a pedestrian plan that was adopted in 2022. We also have regional plans from Campo, from NCDOT, things of that nature, that are in the regional context. So we wanted to implant that into the RFQ, that not only focusing on what we have had adopted, but then also from a regional context, because ultimately we want this to be a comprehensive regional plan, focusing locally for our own infrastructure projects, but then also how it can tie into other projects within the general region. Going into the funding opportunities, Bolton and Menck, from my understanding, they have a sizable amount and presence of identifying funding opportunities. They can certainly shed light on those when we are looking for funding for those particular projects that will be recommended or identified that we would like to prioritize and ultimately become tangible products of this plan. Lastly, it would go into recommendations. As I had mentioned previously, this can go into policy changes. There might be some things in the 2010 plan, the 18 plan, other plans that we want to refine, potentially remove, enhance, things of that nature. Are things within those plans applicable now? How could those be changed? Going into the data analysis side, the network, recommendations on what, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier, microtransit going here versus the O and D, how that kind of puts, how that looks into the lens of the network, where should we improve and where, you know, where things could be potentially like a road diet, things of that nature. So that would all stem from the outcome of that scope of work. Regarding next steps, again, this is a pretty crash course. Fire hydrant, I apologize, drinking from a fire hydrant, but if there's any questions, I can certainly answer. I'm here. I'm supplemented by a representative from Bolton and Menck, Tim, and then I do have behind me my director, Jeff Treisenberg, so we can certainly try and answer any questions to the best of our ability.
Hey, thank you very much. Very important stuff. Apparently, we haven't done the full upgrade in some time.
Correct.
Getting ready to launch on that again. So at this point, the council members here, we can ask some questions, provide some feedback. We don't have to make a decision on this this evening. Apparently, it would be back on our October 21st agenda to consider, to make the decision to proceed. There will be some opportunities between now and then, I think, for other learning opportunities for council.
Correct.
There are a lot of details here, a lot of important questions. That being said, I'll check with our council members here, see if there are any of the questions or comments at this time. And I always defer, when it comes to transportation-related issues, to our own Mr. Transportation, Mayor Proten Elmo Vance.
Thank you, Mayor Gubton. No questions? I just believe that the transportation plan update is well overdue and move forward with it.
Mr. Dellinger?
I want to be a Mr. Something. I don't know what, but it better be not.
Just slip me a note.
Just give me a something.
Slip me a note.
I have a question. So the timeline for starting and ending, what does that, I saw sort of month by month, but sort of practically, where does that put us?
Yeah, and apologies if it's not particularly in this draft scope of work, but from my understanding, we would like to hit the ground running with a consultant and the ultimate, I believe, looking to seek adoption, I believe, is in December of '26. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. Would be adoption for December of '26 is what we would be looking at.
And my other question is related to, as part of this analysis, you mentioned looking at funding and costs and those types of things, because I'm looking at our CIP, and we don't have money allocated in any significant amounts for transportation. I know we did some increases this year in the budget, so probably brings it close to half a million dollars a year or something. So what is the sort of, in that scope of work and development of the plan, what's the strategy for matching sort of the need with anticipated revenues outside of your major projects like Jones Sausage Road, because they kind of cloud the numbers a little bit because they're such big projects? What's the role of CIP conversations in this transportation plan?
And that might be defaulting to, more familiar with the CIP, if I could so, call upon my coworkers for that. I will say, as far as funding goes, one of the, it's not in here, and we've had discussions about it, just for what it's worth. One of the reasons why the selective firm was Bolton and Menck is they had explicitly stated within the RFQ and the scope that they would assist us in grant writing for one particular project. So that was one of the selling points for us, rather than identifying particular projects, hey, you could apply for this funding. We are expecting that there will be some form of grant writing assistance to apply for projects that stem from this project, so, for what that's worth.
Yeah, but you raised a good point about the CIP, since that's kind of still a fairly new process that we're fleshing out here at the town. So I do think it'll be important, particularly in the latter half of the process, to bring Sarah and her budgeting team into the process and facilitate some of those discussions back and forth. But yeah, again... But yeah, that again, funding was a big kind of selling point with Bolton and Menk for us, given their past experience and what they can bring to the table in terms of brainstorming and helping us kind of work through those questions.
I think front-ending some of those conversations into the budget conversations starting in December, and sort of investing that money forward, and looking at Stormwater, very similar situation. We know we have an expense, but we don't have it in our CIP. On the transportation side, sort of look at what, I think there's a, there's a tendency, when you look at the town's budget, to say, this is how much we spend, so this is how much we need. And the reality is, on the transportation side, there's a greater need than there is money in the budget. And so I just want to make sure we're mapping ourselves out to 2030 and beyond.
Right.
Especially when we had presentations come in about bus service and point-to-point and all that stuff, and they had price tags that were in the millions of dollars. So even if we want to do anything outside of major, you know, kind of partner DOT, Jones Sausage, that money has to come from somewhere. So I'd like to make sure that those CIP conversations are happening. And not just for, you know, over a period of years under the transportation plan, quite a 10-year plan. But we've got some fairly short-term needs that we'll need to find revenue for, so.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Behringer.
I would just like to echo Mr. Vance's remarks about this being overdue. And I know it's a big job, and we really appreciate your attention to it and commitment to get it done.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton.
Yes, a specific question under Task Three, Data Inventory and Analysis. Under Updated Regional Contacts and Demographics. I'm down to future projections completed by different agencies to understand expected growth, transportation infrastructure, and service information, that is, traffic volume, roadway capacities, et cetera, et cetera. So we have been following, particularly in the New Bethel Church Road area, about capacity. I know we talked a lot about Creech Road, but it doesn't have the growth that New Bethel Church Road. So is that something that may be part of this, that particular road, and maybe some other roadways, where we'll know specifically the capacity with everything that has been approved in that area? And then we'll basically know what's left to go approved down there is the way the roadway structure currently stands. That's, is that what you're speaking of in this, about these specific demographics and traffic projections?
You coming back?
Yeah, generally, I would say yes. We may need to do a little more drilling down to some very specific questions within each corridor. But we have identified within the origin and destination analysis all of the major commuting corridors into and out of Garner. So that did include Creech Road and Benson, of course Benson and White Oak. But we can also do some, some smaller area analysis on roads like New Bethel that aren't necessarily going in or out of Garner, but are just major roads within Garner. And so, yeah, we can get down to that, separating out what traffic is, you know, pass-through versus which is actually coming in and leaving Garner and traffic that's just within Garner itself, and do some of that comparison. So, yeah, there is that element of comparing the volumes to the capacity and what kind of recommendations can come out of that for future widening. Is the MTP that we have currently with Campo, is that adequate enough? You know, should, hopefully by this time, we feel like we've got those in a pretty good condition as far as, you know, what the ultimate future cross-section needs to be to support the traffic needs. But this is a checkpoint to go ahead and run the analysis and re-verify that those projections are correct. Or if we do need to make a change, that we get that information to Campo to support those changes.
Then, you know, I'm asking about that area specifically because there's not much land left. And I'm sure there'll be other projects that'll be coming this way. And the capacity, there's really only two right now, two main ways in. Unless, hopefully, one day there'll be an Ackerman Road extension. But anyway, you asked my question. I just want to make, I just seen how detail-oriented we're going to be on some of these corridors that are, have experienced a lot of growth and expansion in some of their travel numbers over the past few years.
Yeah, it is fairly, I think, broadly written, but we do know that those two areas in particular keep coming up during our rezoning discussions, so we can dive into those as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Excellent questions. We want to continue those over the next couple of weeks as we continue to look at this. The more dialogue, the more communication, the better product we can have, the better process. Because we will be looking at this for some time to come, probably not the next 15 years, like the last one. But we do want to keep up to date and keep this in our forefront. Mr. Matthews, comment?
Somewhat of a follow-up to what Singleton was talking about. I know, if we look at Highway 50, I know we're going to do quite a bit of work in the coming years there, another bridge and that whole core there. And then, I know, sometime back, I was talking about a cut-through there by, what's that, Rose? Come from the backside over there, Ackerman Road, but it's a cut-through to.
Ackerman Road Extension Highway.
Yeah, right, right. Across from the International Airport there. But, but, you know, people talk about traffic a lot of times, and we've used the term pass-through. And I understand that because so much traffic is pass-through and not necessarily from. How do we, is there a formula to determine, when we look at development down the road, and we've got to make these crucial decisions? Well, how do we determine what's pass-through and what's really our local people living in that area? Because when you tally the numbers up, in one way, they're accurate as an aggregate of traffic going through. But far as our growth and what have you that we've got control of, how do we determine that? Is there a formula for that? And that's, that's way out there, but maybe you can help me with that.
And I'll attempt to take a stab at that, so we'll see how it goes. That was one of the fundamental pieces of the RFQ, was to do that O and D, that origin and destination. So rather than NCDOT arbitrarily going out to roads, laying down the strip and counting, we don't know where those roads, like those cars utilizing those roads are exactly going to go. From my understanding and my familiarity with O and D is O and D does try and showcase who is going where, or how many cars are utilizing what road when returning left. One of the presentations that we had showcased in Minneapolis, where it had three segments of bridges, and you could see the X amount of thousands of cars that were going down what particular roadway. So that should, in theory, showcase how these people are moving, where they're moving, and in what directions.
Yeah, what kind of, I was headed down to Fuquay early this morning on some business, and just seeing all the traffic coming up on 401. I mean, it was just rock set all the way from just about all the way into coming into Garner. And I know it's that way on 70 and some other roads, which is that pass-through we're talking about. So it's just, if we can figure that one out, we're doing quite well.
Right.
But you've got a difficult job there, but if we can come up with those numbers, it surely would be nice. Thank you very much, Mr. Behringer.
Good input so far. Let's take another round, Mr. Vance.
Yes, and Mr. Singleton just got me thinking a little bit more, and you're probably covering this within this, within your study. And that pertains to the growth that's going on in the northeast corridor off of Jones Sausage Road, and particularly looking at Wilmington Road. The Wilmington Road in that area, how it connects from Jones Sausage and goes, and potentially goes over to Creech Road, with anticipating potential significant growth in that area. Is it safe to assume that that will be considered within this, within this traffic study as to what would be the correct type of facility, highway facility to put there in the future, based upon the projected growth?
Right. And so utilizing the documents that we do have, the various plans, the development activity maps, and things that we're anticipating down, down the pipeline. I think that, you know, again, utilizing all those tools and doing the data aggregation, then that could hopefully help us better understand or the anticipated impacts of what types of recommendations will stem from this. So again, in theory of like the O and D, if the scope is coming up where there's a sizable amount of traffic that could potentially be offset by a fixed route or something along those nature, then that data will be reflected into that, if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. It answered my question. It surely does. I'll hold the rest.
Yeah, you mentioned the policy assessment. Is that an assessment of current policies? Or is it sort of an assessment of potential policies?
So, but I would say, yeah, both. And then, yeah, so Tim, Trey Solevy could potentially come up here and reflect on exactly their intent. But in the scope of work, we didn't limit it to just existing policies. I mean, this is an evolution. And then, of course, looking at policies of other plans that have been developed recently that are certainly more probably up-to-date than ours. But a policy assessment of what exists beforehand, within the RFQ, we had identified several plans for them to look at. Hopefully, they had been familiar with already. That was taken into account of the selection process. And then how that evolves into, you know, what policies we exactly want, or the guiding policies for the future, so.
And would there, would there be cost sort of estimates associated with those policy recommend, I won't call them recommendations, but assessments? So if there were, again, point-to-point or some other type of option for improving, you know, transportation within the town, would there be some of that policy analysis? And then sort of a cost analysis as part of that policy assessment?
And I'm curious to see, I guess, the fiscal side of the policies. Some of the policies I'm internalizing could be the, the change. And as an example, one of the standouts of the RFQ regarding policy was looking at the cross-sections. And so one of the things that's going to be developed are going to be the revamping or the introduction of new cross-sections. Those, of course, hopefully can take into the cost-benefit analysis. Some cross-sections are very expensive. And to see how that could potentially play into it, so.
And just the other part came up yesterday as well in our Affordable Housing Task Force, is BRT realignment, and how transportation is kind of essential for, you know, folks to move around and those corridors become even more attractive when you have that type of high velocity or high-frequency transit. And so I just want to make sure that there's sort of a consideration nods to other parts of the comprehensive plan that mention housing affordability, and sort of the opportunity that BRT creates for that, if we want to prioritize that. And again, also from a policy perspective, but also quality of life perspective. So I just put that out there, that that realignment is significant and could be, help us in a lot of other ways too.
And that, that's all.
Mr. Behringer.
I don't have any additional comments. I just would like to say, again, I appreciate the hard work that's going into this. I know it's going to be difficult sometimes, and, but it's necessary, so thank you.
Mr. Singleton, other comments or questions?
I'll listen to it. I'm okay right now.
I did want to thank you, as Mr. Behringer said, for the hard work and the hard work yet to come. As Councilman Dellinger pointed out, it has more, it's not just streets, it's not just roads, it's mass transit, it's various levels of that. And I'm glad to see it includes pedestrian and greenway recommendations as well. A real comprehensive, how does all this stuff help our people get where they're going? Perhaps without having to get in their car every time they go anywhere. Part of the big master plan, way overdue. I'm glad we're launching that. Let's continue this dialogue. Continue your questions, council members, please, at least for the next couple of weeks, to help us get moving in the right direction, so we can have a comprehensive, long-range plan to integrate all these critical, critical things. We don't want to be like Fuquay with only one way to get out of town. Thank you. No more questions or actions on this. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
For the presentation, we'll move ahead to item number two on the new and old business, which has to do with strategic plan refresh of the framework. And it was interesting to me, just as Mr. Dellinger was talking about questions having to do with how this, how it gets rated. I think this strategic plan is supposed to be an even wider look at this, not just transportation, but how do we make transportation and other priorities? How do we do that in a consistent way going forward? We haven't redone this one since about 2016, I think. So this is another planning tool, another thing to help council set priorities, not just for transportation, but for the bigger picture as well. And with that, I will pass the microphone to our Assistant Town Manager, Matt Poole.
Thank you, Mayor Guddon, members of council. On behalf of Ms. Miller and the manager's office, we're here tonight to discuss the strategic plan 2026 Refresh Framework. So I've got several slides we're going to go over on the process of how we refresh our strategic, existing strategic plan in preparations to have it adopted in 2026. If you have any questions along the way, please don't hesitate to ask. So just to get started, wanted to ask a theoretical question of, you know, why do we do a strategic plan? There's a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that not only council, but staff understand about why we were going to do what we choose to do. Number one, it provides clear guidance and focus to local government on policies and budget. As you know, a strategic plan should be a driver of each fiscal year's budget. We use it as a communication tool for staff. So this way, staff can see the plan and see where our next five years are going, what these visions are, so they can attempt to accomplish those. We communicate to employees what is important, what has purpose. We'll talk about prioritization in a little bit later. It helps us prioritize the work and organize with limited resources, especially during a budget process. Also, what it will do as we navigate this process is we need guidance and direction from you. And by having a plan, we'll help council make decisions on controversial issues. So three benefits to strategic planning that I wanted to touch on. Number one is an accountability tool. It serves as a framework for us to achieve the goals and priorities of council. And as we go through this strategic planning process over the next several months, our goal is to better understand what your vision is. And then the manager's office develops a mission, and there are core values that our staff report to you every day to make these things happen. And so by having a strategic plan, we understand the accountability part of that process. We also use this as communication, I mentioned in a previous slide. But we need to, we use this as a tool to communicate the vision both externally to our citizens and internally to the staff that work here every day. And then also prioritization. There are so many things that go on here every day that we need to take some of these large-scale items and make them a higher priority in order to accomplish them in a timely manner. And so a strategic plan helps us to choose what those large priorities are and how we navigate those over a five-year period. So as I mentioned, we want to build this plan on updating three guiding principles. We want to have conversations with council and better understand not only your past vision, your current vision, but also where do you see the next five years? We take that information and we develop a mission on when we come to work every day, what that mission is, how do we accomplish that? And then certainly, the values that we choose and the decisions that we make help us accomplish that mission. So those are three things that we need to update and refresh, and that's a foundation of any strategic plan. So in this slide, what I'd like to focus on, we're going to touch on these three areas in future slides, but I want to see the timeframe, just so you can get a better understanding of how long this process will generally take. We began the information gathering phase a month or two ago. And so in that phase, and we'll talk about it, we're reviewing all of our existing plans. We're reviewing the existing studies and getting an idea on kind of where we came from. That process can generally take up to four to six months. Then we go into plan development, which could take six to eight months, and then implementation and rollout of the plan, three or three-plus months. So, you know, generally speaking, when you start working on identifying a strategic plan or updating one, it's no less than a 12-month period. We'll explain why when we get to data collection in just a minute. So the first piece of refreshing our strategic plan, and we are currently in this phase, is we are reviewing all of the current existing plans, goals, initiatives, and outcomes that we have. We're gathering all existing information just to get a baseline on what we're currently doing. We will evaluate relevant documents, and we're using specifically as an example the 2024 National Community Survey. We use previous operating budgets, goals and objectives of the previous plan. We want to identify any external changes, such as economic, demographic, regulatory concerns that may impact the plan. The last plan was created numerous years ago, and things have changed since then. In the history of strategic planning, it used to be called a strategic long-range plan, and they were 10-year plans. And that's generally poor planning at this point because so many things change at a more rapid pace. So generally, strategic planning now is not necessarily a long-range plan, but a five-year plan. You have capital, capital planning that can go multiple years, 10, 20 years out, those things. But a, but a business strategic plan generally is a five-year period. And we need to identify some of these changes that have occurred since our last plan and what changes are on the horizon. We want to engage with department heads and relevant staff to see what their challenges and priorities are. So we'll talk about this at the bottom of this slide, but we've, we're performing SOAR analysis. So if you're familiar with SWOT or SWAC analysis, it's a similar type situation. It's just over time, this business model was changed to a SOAR acronym. So at our town department head leadership retreat, we performed a SOAR analysis with our department heads to gather how they're feeling about things, about their. our department heads to gather how they're feeling about things, about their challenges, their initiatives. So we've done that and we're talking just a little bit about forming a strategic plan refresh committee. So after tonight, when we receive any information, guidance and questions from you, we will begin that process of developing a strategic plan fresh committee. The representatives, we would like to have representation from the town council, the town manager's office, our leadership team, as well as representatives from the citizens. So we want this to be a diverse group of people and how we break this up into segments and accomplish the plan. There will be multiple SOAR analysis, like I said, throughout this process, department heads, council, leadership, citizenry. So these things help us, what we're trying to do is we're trying to pick up themes, things that all of us feel like we need to plan for, not just one particular group of representation. We need an extreme amount of engagement with our community stakeholders. So we want to hold multiple workshops with elected officials and residents using various methods. So we want to be diverse in how we try to accomplish this. We certainly want to have in person meetings at various locations, but we also want to offer virtual options for people as well. We want to use this, this process for these community meetings to stress some of the surveys that's been conducted and make sure people know that this information is out there. One specific example is the 2024 National Community Service, National Community Survey. So we, they're generally, we think there's a large population that does know about it, but during these meetings, we feel like we can better show the documents and studies that we have, and hopefully that fosters more engagement. And then we'll, we'll work to get specific goals and objectives, and I'll talk about that in a slide. Another addition to our strategic plan refresh, so Ms. Miller has requested that we do another national community survey. So it's been two, two years since we've gathered that information. And so her vision is that we will do this periodically and it, as it starts to become benchmarks for us. So we can gauge what the community thinks we are improving on or we are not, and that will help you better understand those priorities and how we can tackle some of those problems. So our strategy and innovation manager, Ms. Howell, is in, currently in the process of working with that consultant to develop that survey so we can have it out towards the end of this calendar year. We will incorporate the new findings and discussions and benchmark the 2024 study to the 26 study. So this is probably one of the most important pieces of a strategic plan is we do all the background work, all the community engagement, all the stakeholder feedback. We take all of this information, we try to pick up on large scale themes, and then that the end result is, you know, we've got to produce work. And so to the, the work that we'll produce for the next five years, hopefully will be five to seven main, main strategic priorities. And so we, that reflect not only our current needs, but, but our future needs for the next five years. We want to make sure when we choose these priorities that they align with long term goals, available resources, but also emerging opportunities. And that's part of strategic planning that gets missed a lot is that people get focused on where you've come from or what you currently have, and you're not thinking ahead at what are opportunities in our near future that we can levy in order to accomplish some of these large scale projects. So that's something that we've got to do is really look ahead and see what those opportunities are. A piece of these, the strategic plan is the five to seven items need to be SMART based. So SMART is an acronym that we use on how to, how do we structure these items? So it would be based on the management team to lead this discussion about how they're prioritized. We would assist the lead development of five to seven SMART objectives by the end of the plan. Here's, and another most, one of the most important parts is there needs to be a system to monitor this. There are so many communities that develop a strategic plan and it goes on a shelf and it looks good and it, and there's a, there's an instant release of that information and then it fizzles out. A strategic plan should be a living document. It should be something that we, we work on every day. In order to do that, we have to hold ourselves accountable for that. And so there needs to be a process that once the plan is adopted, that we as staff members chip away and hold ourselves accountable to these projects. And so there are several methods and we need to select what was going to be best for the town. We have in here the, an example of the fire rescue. So Garner Fire Rescue until July was a private department and it developed its own strategic plan because it was a standalone entity. And Chief Hathcock developed a quarterly system that was essentially, we would meet quarterly, we all had responsibilities to the plan and we would hold each other accountable. And not only that, but when you do that, you start to see fruits of your labor. So if I'm assigned a particular part of this plan and we go to a meeting and I can say, hey, we've accomplished this piece, or this, this should be a budget request in FY27, you, you're starting to see progress. And that's a motivational tool when you're working on these projects. Because a lot of these projects are so big, you just can't see movement in time. But by, by holding each other accountable and, and some form of process to continue to do this, we'll accomplish these more efficiently. So we have to figure out, you know, what model we use. There are other methods, Ms. Howell is looking into, to other systems on how we do that as well. So we, to draft the refresh plan, we create content, hopefully that it's adopted 2026 to 2031. We're going to work with the strategy innovation manager to design the layout and to format the plan and use the, the approved content to create this draft. So that's, and once we take all this information, we digest it, we formulate where we need to go, we create the plan, Ms. Howell helps to format and design it. Once all of that occurs, we need to formally adopt the plan. So certainly we will be in contact and get information from you throughout this process. And then once it's in draft format, we will work with our strategic planning committee. We will present that plan to you for formal adoption. And then the final phase, and again, this is one of the missed opportunities of a strategic plan, is we have to make this publicly known. You know, I, I come from a fire background in the fire service accreditation. Part of a strategic planning is required that it is forward facing to the public. It has to be so it's on the fire department's website. It was on anything that we would send out because we were trying to get the public to see and understand where we needed to go. I like that concept and I think that's a, a concept the manager's office wants to use with this process. But it needs to be rolled out. So Mr. Mercer, our communications director, is part of the strategic plan refresh committee. He knows his responsibilities of when we get to this point, what he and his team do will help get this message out. All these things he would, he would be responsible for, he and his team. So what communication outlets we use, what type of questions do we think the community will want to know, and certainly a strategy on how we get that out. And finally, once all of this is done and this process is complete, we have to hold ourselves accountable. Like I said, we have to monitor this, we need to implement some form of a quarterly system to hold the, to accomplish these goals and objectives. We need a standing committee and to be accountable for making sure these things are accomplished. We need to explore strategies for aligning the town services and staff to work for the planned priorities. And then not only that, but this is a key part, you'll never get buy in from your community or your staff members about a plan unless they feel like they were a part of it. The town council will not buy into or believe into the plan unless you are a part of this plan. And so we've got to make sure that from the top down to the bottom, everyone plays a part in developing this plan. Because we'll have ownership in it then and we'll want to see it through. All of you have been part of this process before, and we all know that this plan will never come to complete fruition in five years, but, and I use this analogy, if you're, if you're going to drive to the mountains, most of us now would pull out an app and we would look at Google Maps and it would tell you the fastest route, how to avoid tolls, where traffic is, where the police is, right? So we, all that, the whole intention is for us to get there faster, more efficient. It's a map. Well, that's what a strategic plan is. I can get to the mountains without that phone, but I'm not going to get there as effective and efficient as if I'm using that, that guiding principle. And that's what a strategic plan is. It's a roadmap for us. So that's essentially the process, the timeline, a broad vision of what we're getting ready to tackle as a town together. So I'm here to answer any questions you have regarding the strategic planning process.
Well, well, thank you very much for an excellent presentation. There's a lot of stuff involved here, but it boils down to two of the toughest things that government does. One is how to get input from our citizens, not just our citizens, but our businesses. And not just them, not mentioning elected officials, but how about our, our other government partners? We don't build schools, we, we work with Wake County Public Schools. We don't build roads, we, we work with NC DOT and developers. How to get all that input marching to the same beat, huge, huge challenge, but we have to make sure we're doing everything we can. The second most challenging thing is a system to monitor progress. You mentioned accountability. Yes, one thing to have wonderful dreams and wonderful plans, but how do we make sure we're actually making progress? So those are huge challenges. I really applaud staff's willingness to jump into this. But also I take great encouragement from the fact that four of our major departments in their accreditation processes over the last several years have forced them to do this same type of strategic planner. And when I talk about the ones that are accredited, very specifically fire, police, public works, parks and rec. You, you guys have already been chasing this rabbit, you've been inventing this wheel, you're doing this for your department. This will help us bring all of that together, to set overall priorities, how these work together and how we get the input and the accountability. So my hat's off to all of you. I'm sure we have questions and comments. Likewise, we've got a couple more weeks to continue to refine this in small group discussions. But we'll start at the other end down here with Mr. Matthews for questions and comments. Then we'll work down council to see what we've observed, absorbed so far. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, by the way. I was not quite sure what, how it's going to do, how it's going to be come to us, but it seemed like you got, you've got your hands on the pulse of what you want to do here. I guess the exciting part is going to see what you guys bring back is what are those five, seven big things we want to tackle over the coming years and, and how we go about it? Because there's so many endless possibilities what they could be, as we're sitting here just talking about, and I was ramming my mind, is something going to come from over here? Something going to come from over where here? Well, this be a, something from public works or whatever. So, but I'm eager and excited about seeing what you guys bring back based upon the data you have from the past and public input. And I do like the idea of, you know, manager of looking at 26, coming back and doing another survey like that, because we're growing so fast. I mean, one day we're 30,000 people, now we're 45,000 people. And top 10 fastest growing towns in United States of America, things have changed than what they were 10 years ago, even five years ago. And we've got to be prepared for this, be prepared to move forward and make those changes and because we're growing and, and this is a big business that we operate here and we are the board and the president and to make this thing happen. So congratulations on what you've done so far. Eagerly wait to see what you guys come to us with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton.
So based off the timeline in here, Mr. Poole, refreshing the strategic plan, we're looking at something that's going to take 13 to 17 plus months possibly to roll out.
Our goal is to have this completed by the beginning of the fiscal year. We've already begun some of the, the initial phase, so we've already reviewed all the documents. So after tonight's feedback, we're essentially moving into phase two. So our, we're, we're shoot, those are, you know, that's just a broad timeline, but I think it's the manager's thought process. I don't defer to her, but we were hoping to have this completed by the beginning of the fiscal year.
About June 30th, June or July, what you're talking about?
Mr. Singleton, so.
Of 26.
Yeah, so, Mr. Singleton, in terms of timeline, what was being presented this evening was to start the work on the engagement work and the survey work for this fall, have that information ready to go so then early 2026 calendar year, we can start the discussions and further engagement with the community on our priorities, our mission, our vision, to be able to then start drafting things for further discussion and feedback from council. Ultimately, the goal would be to have something approved by council by the end of the fiscal year. It could go a little further in the summertime if council feel like, felt like they needed more time, but we want to make sure that we spend the time doing this plan right because it's something we're going to have to live with for the next five years. We want to make sure that we're capturing all the opportunities and challenges that we have ahead of us so that we can plan appropriately.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer.
I'm excited to hear the plan. I remember many, many years ago, I worked on the North Garner Plan Committee that was appointed then, and it was a good plan. It had a lot of potential and it was put on a shelf. And I was really happy to hear you say this is not going to be put on a shelf. I know that's never the intention, but sometimes we have to hear ourselves say it to make it happen, and I am looking forward to the work. It's going to be hard work, just like the transportation plan, but it's going to be good work and really do appreciate your efforts.
Good. Mr. Dellinger.
I've always been in awe of the fire department and its use of data and strategy and culture and that unflinching look at data, even when it says what you don't want it to say, is important. And I think we have an existing strategic plan now. I look at it every once in a while, try to, you know, make use of it. So I think even in the, in the short term, we have a strategic plan now. We should be looking at it now and building that habit and culture of holding ourselves accountable to the strategic plan we have now and make sure we're hitting those marks. I think the, one of the biggest challenges in this whole process in, in a change of mentality will be candor around data. Whether it's a survey that goes out, reran survey, any survey, if it doesn't say something you don't like, you need to look at it straight in the eye. And you can't gather data to have gathered data and say, we gathered data. You need to analyze the data. That's how, there's no point in gathering data if you don't analyze it and sit down with a group of people who understand different elements and contexts and perspectives on the data, because the data is not going to tell the whole story. But that is, one of the biggest challenges we'll have is candor around data.
And Mr. Dellinger, we started those conversations in our department head meetings about how do we better performance measure and benchmark? And we, you know, we, we're using the, the adage of, you don't, you shouldn't pick where you're trying to go until you can tell what you're currently doing. And that takes time, right? It takes time to understand what you're currently doing because that shows fallacies, deficiencies, and it shows where you're doing good. And I think, I think hopefully that's, that's what we're looking at. And I'll have to give kudos to Mr. Hodges, my counterpart. The, the 2016 strategic plan is a great plan. It is, and he, he's taught me a lot that, of how they were using and measuring this and checking it accordingly along the way. It, it just needs to be updated. But I agree, it is a great foundation, but we have to know what we're currently doing and that's part of this process. I, I agree with you completely.
And just the last point on the data is you have, when you're gathering the data, you have to gather it like you want to hear the truth. There are ways the data can be gathered, that it skews the, how many people answered this way to this question? You've got to really want to see, look in the mirror to know what, where you need to go and where you need to improve. So I have a lot of confidence in you and, and your track record over there, fire department. And again, I think if we can make a shift on our approach to data, we can make progress with this and, and the accountability piece too, I think is important. So thank you so much for the information.
Thank you. I'm thinking about a new name, Mr. Data.
Okay.
We'll just test, we'll test drive it for a little bit, see, see how it works out. Just don't jump right in there with it. Mr. Vance.
I would just say that a great, great briefing, a great start, and everything that's been said, I wholeheartedly support. Have no questions.
Excellent. Yeah, let's keep asking these questions and keep up this interaction with all parties involved, not just for the next few weeks, but clearly through the entire process. So thank, any other questions, comments?
One more comment. The piece about making sure that we communicate to the public what's going on. I hear over and over again when something controversial comes up, well, I didn't know about that. Well, I did not ask them, well, did you, did you look online? Well, I don't want to do that. So we need to find a way to get the word out to people so that they are informed, whether they do it in a responsible way or not, but to make sure that we've done what we can to find the button that works for them to make sure they can't say, we didn't know.
A perennial challenge.
Yes.
In communication. Communication seems so simple, it's so complicated. Will. Great, good luck going ahead. Keep us in the loop. Let's all move ahead together on this one. Thank you very much, Mr. Paul. Well, that brings us along various updates to council, committee reports.
Excuse me, Mayor, we need to go back and approve the minutes. If you recall, those were pulled from the consent agenda and so we need to take separate action on those items to go ahead and approve them. So before we go to the reports, if council so chooses to take action, that would be the appropriate time.
Okay. Thank you. I think we did have some discussion on the minutes, but we didn't go through the process of actually approving that particular item. So thank you. Let's return back to the item number eight, which was on the consent agenda. We pulled it out to discuss the council meeting minutes from several previous sessions here. And the action before us is to actually approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Ms. Behringer. Is there any discussion, any further discussion about approving the minutes? Hearing none. Let's take a voice vote. All in favor of approving those minutes as specified, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Does that get us back on track?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Now, what we've all been looking forward to, updates to council. And we start with committee reports is always interesting. I think it's time to start back to this end. Mr. Vance, your committee reports.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to say that the Affordable Housing Task Force Committee met on yesterday, October 6th, to continue on with the discussion about affordable housing and the next actions moving forward. We are looking at, looking at, well, we have established subcommittees to look at resource investments, partnerships and collaborations and community engagement. This is a Herculean effort, a lot that's moving parts that we are currently working with to try to provide the information for the council to make an ultimate decision. And just wanted to say that the intent also of the Affordable Housing Task Force is to provide more frequent briefings to the council, possibly during work sessions, to provide updates so there will not be a dump on everyone at one time, to try to keep everyone up to date as we move forward. And I would just say thank you to the staff for all the work they've, they've been doing also to Mr. Dillinger and the rest of the committee members who are sacrificing tremendous amount of time and have a tremendous amount of passion when it comes to affordable housing. And we know that there's a lot of moving parts and there are a lot of different areas that we can go, but we're trying to stay focused to provide, to provide a product for the town to make a decision on in the very near future. And that is pretty much it. Mr. Dillinger, you want to say anything, sir?
You covered it all. Thank you. Okay. All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dallinger, committee reports.
That was my report.
Okay. Good. Wow. Two for one, one for two. Thank you. Ms. Behringer.
Yes, the public art committee will meet, the October meeting will be October 15th at 5:15 in the training room here at Town Hall. And our purpose will be to finalize the bylaws and adopt them so that we can move ahead.
Excellent. Excellent. Keep up the good work. Mr. Singleton.
Nothing at this time.
Hey, Mr. Matthews.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Then that brings us right along to manager reports. Ms. Miller.
Yes, Mayor. And. Mayor and members of council. Just a reminder that on Saturday, we have our Garner Night Out Trick or Eat Food Truck and Touch a Truck Event all downtown. So it's going to be a great, great fun from 5 to 9. So please come out, enjoy some great food from our food trucks, get to know our public safety agents, agencies and the services they provide and get to see all the cool equipment that they also have in, in order to keep us safe. So we're excited about hosting that event again. Once again, it's going to be Saturday evening, 5 to 9 downtown.
Thank you. And that's it for manager reports. All right. And we, of course, we might have an attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm proud to report that our assistant town attorney, Morgan Pierce, is mentoring a student who is present here tonight, Melissa Dean. She's a third-year law student at Campbell Law School. So this continues the legal department's efforts in mentoring and internship opportunities for aspiring lawyers and lost, for each of the law schools in the area. So I'd like to welcome Ms. Dean to the meeting.
Thank you. Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, that, that's a great two-way learning thing. The interns learn, we learn, and maybe we even plant a seed toward a future employee. Who knows? So it's a, it's a great program. Thank you for being with us. Okay? So that takes us back to council reports, not just committees, but I'll start with Mr. Matthews this time, any council report.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Singleton.
Just can report on Farmers Day. It was a big hit on Saturday. We had great weather. Saw the mayor and the manager and Mr. Jones, Public Works riding high up there in the truck, waiting. I don't know if they were throwing any candy, but somebody was throwing some candy because they were.
We were afraid to throw it from that altitude.
Might have, might have hurt somebody if you hit them in the head, but anyway, it was a big, big success, good crowd, good food. And of course, the house demonstration, the burning demonstration on the house is a huge hit, as always. And so, well done. And again, the weather cooperated and a very successful day.
It was indeed. Thanks for bringing that up. That was, that was a huge event. The first time, the first time that the town and, and the fire and rescue had done this totally jointly. We've always worked together, but it felt good to ride with us on the same truck at the same time, even though Chief, Chief over there almost bumped his head going on the railroad track there. We, we shouted just in time to duck, duck, so that all worked out. Ms. Behringer, your report.
Yes, I would agree. That was an outstanding Fireman's Day celebration. It was just wonderful to be part of it. I have a couple of other things. When we were on 70 West and we take the Vandoora Springs Road exit onto Vandoora Springs to get off of 70, the pavement there is just cracked up and in bits and pieces on that exit ramp. Also, the median on the left side that separates the, the traffic that goes on to 70 from the traffic that's coming off, that's in bits and pieces too. Pieces of concrete lying all over the way. And that needs to be repaired. It's in bad shape. So both the pavement and the concrete median. And along those same lines on Jones Sausage Road, if a car is going south on Jones Sausage Road goes over Garner Road, if they're not being very careful, that there's a big bump that will cause the bottom of the car to scrape the pavement. So we need to have that looked at as well.
Yeah, thanks for your attention. Mr. Dallinger.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the housing position. And the recommendation came from the task force in January of this past year. The, we voted not to include a position in the budget in June. We got the information we wanted from Central Pines in August. The council said it wanted to facilitate that decision. And I guess my question to council is when are we going to put this up for a vote on what we want to do that we seem to have met all the preconditions for making that decision?
Okay. That's a good question. And is that something we, is an easy answer coming from staff? I guess we're, we're looking from staff?
Well, Mayor, Mayor, I can share what the Affordable Housing Task Force talked about during our meeting yesterday. We presented to the task force, as Mr. Vance stated, the areas that council said they wanted to move forward with in terms of our next work on affordable housing. The first was resource investment. The second, we looked at collaboration and partnership opportunities, and then the third looked at community engagement. And so we, we talked through what those items would look like and what the goals of each one of those areas would be, and then created some specific deliverables under each of those, those topic areas. And as was shared previously, we've organized ourselves into committees to do that work, to bring back to the full task force for further discussion, to come to consensus on final recommendations that would come back before council. In the resource investment area, specifically, we talk about resources and what resources we need moving forward to support the, the town's initiatives and priorities with housing. But we also talked about it in terms of really understanding and defining what the town's role is in affordable housing. And so that's the work that the, that committee will be working on. Mr. Vance has agreed to, to chair that committee. I'm serving on that committee as well as the staff resource. And then Ralph Carson, who's also on the task force, has agreed to serve on that committee. So that's the work that we agreed to yesterday and that we'll be working on through this fall.
Thank you. Apparently yesterday was the first time the Affordable Housing Task Force had reconvened after a little recess through the summer for various reasons. And so we're, we're anxious to continue to get feedback from the committee and we're looking at our two council reps right there, you and Mr. Vance. And we're looking at our, our staff that's involved, very eager to keep us posted on the progress and the suggestions that come out of the subcommittee. There's a lot of work going on.
It is. And I would like to request that we put that vote on the next council agenda for adding a housing position. Per rules and procedures, it will be on our next agenda.
Well, if it's your prerogative to make, make any suggestion, I would like to hear it come formally from the, from the task force. I would like, I would like to hear this come from the task force and after their work with subcommittees.
Per our rules and procedures, a council member can place an item on an agenda. I would like to place that on the, on the October 21st agenda. For discussion or a vote, or not a vote, but I'd like it on the agenda for the 21st.
Okay. That's very reasonable. I'm sure that's been made note of. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to add on to that, and I would say that in, in support of what the manager said, we, she has provided a, a intern who's currently with, working with us from UNC Chapel Hill, will help us with the, the research that we're currently doing because of the need of, of having someone who is, well, learning the area, if they can help us work through this process and be that additional, that additional support to help us keep everything moving forward, focusing on affordable housing. So I would say the, the resource there, I believe, will be a, a great example of what a staff person would possibly be doing to carry on with the affordable housing effort in, in the future. So I'm just saying that to, to say that the resources are being added, provided now to try to help us focus on affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you very much for all the work that's going on. Any other council reports, Mr. Vance, on any other items?
No, sir.
I think we wrapped up with council. Was somebody thought of another report? Okay. There is no closed session for this, for this particular agenda. So unless there's other business that needs to be brought up, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Matthews to adjourn. If there's any, any further discussion, we'll hear it. If not, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, unanimously adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and our home audience viewing remotely. Thank you.